Legion Post 324, Jersey Village Police Department Employee of the Quarter Selection Committee meet to review a list of candidates selected by their peers. For these, we select one employee most deserving of recognition and appreciation. This is in no way a simple task, as all of these employees of the department are outstanding individuals that serve a purpose greater than themselves. For the third quarter of 2018, the American Legion selection for Officer of the Quarter is Detective Sergeant Devron Limerick. Sergeant Limerick, Limerick, excuse me, has shown a high level of professionalism, dedication, and proactivity. He loves his job, and his work performance shows it. We thank you for your service and dedication to this department and our community. All of these attributes work together to ensure that Jersey Village Police Department works smoothly and provides our residents with peace of mind and makes Jersey Village a destination community. We would also like to recognize the other nominations for this quarter. Please stand to be recognized if you're here. Officer Jimenez, Officer Guzman, Officer Kobel, and Dispatcher Amarga, I'm sorry if I messed that up, thank you for your dedication and hard work to our community.
The next, the next award is Employee of the Quarter, City Manager Austin Bleece.
Employee of the Month, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, tonight, we are very excited to announce the October 2018 Employee of the Month. Our Employee of the Month is Ernesto Rio. So Ernesto, would you join me up here? Ernesto was nominated. Ernesto was nominated by his colleague who witnessed Ernesto stepping up and filling in the gaps during the recent transition of court administrator we had here. She noted he is consistently pleasant and takes on all additional assignment with enthusiasm and dedication. Regardless of deadlines or other pressures, Ernesto always delivers. Ernesto stepped up to make sure everything was completed on time, even when that meant putting in extra hours on nights and weekends. He always has a jovial attitude that permeates the entire office and brightens everyone's day. It's my distinct pleasure to present him with the Employee of the Month for the month of October 2018. Ernesto, congratulations.
Thank you, Chief.
Let's move right in to the Juvenile Curfew Public Hearings and Related Items. Item 1, D1, Review the City of Jersey Village Juvenile Curfew Ordinance's Effects on the Community and Problems the Ordinance Was Intended to Remedy. A presentation by Chief of Police Eric Forster.
Mayor Counsel, we're going to talk about the curfew, I apologize for my voice. We're going to talk about the curfew renewal tonight, and I want to start this with kind of a summary. I've had a lot of questions about this. Every three years, this ordinance comes up for review, and we need to look and see how it interacts with the community, how it impacts the community and crime as a whole. We need to conduct public hearings, or a public hearing on this, and we need to determine whether we abolish, continue, or modify the ordinance as it stands. I bet a lot of questions all came out of the summary, and the summary is what we're looking at in front of us. So, it's going to take a few minutes, but I want to show a correlation between what sometimes statistics do for us and what sometimes they don't. If you look at the top line, 2009 is when the curfew was first enacted. So we had 33 juvenile entries into CAD, 11 contacts were made during curfew hours, and nine curfew citations were issued. That's when the curfew ordinance was first enacted. You drop all the way down the bottom to 2017, 2018, and you look at the juvenile entries, I believe it's 259 or 269. Contacts made during juvenile times, 110, and curfew citations were 29. There's a correlation here between that and some other statistics I'm going to show you in a minute, but there's a lot of things that go into this, and Bobby asked a good question today, said, "What do you think causes this?" And there are many things. I think the population of Jersey Village and the area around us greatly impacts this. The amount of students at JV High impacts this, and I think the pass-through traffic impacts this. So whether, we can't put our finger on what is driving the numbers, the numbers are here, and those are the numbers that we have. We can't specifically say why. You look at the crime statistics, I'm sorry, that did not show up very well in a, in a the background there. The left chart is 2015 to 2016, I'm going to go three years now, it was 136. 2016, 2017 was 205, and 2017, 2018 is 264. Keeping in mind, we're doing double the traffic stops we were doing four years ago. So significant increases are going to happen because of that. This is not curfew violations. These are people that were driving a car that are juveniles. And that's, I think, where a lot of the confusion came in, was, "Oh, my gosh, we're stopping all these kids." No, they're, they're getting caught up in all of the traffic stops that we're doing. You get the crime statistics on, these are juvenile arrests. Again, we have, for 2015, 2016, we have 16 arrests. 2016, 2017, we have 18 arrests. 2017 and 2018, we have 31 arrests. And again, those come out of traffic stops, not curfew violations. Those are for other violations such as warrants, MIP, possession of marijuana, and so on. Juvenile citations, these are citations that were issued 2015 to 2016, we wrote 42. 2016 to 2017, we wrote 42. 2017 to 2018, we wrote 32. So again, that's contradictory to what the statistics looked like at the beginning. And here's where I want you to draw a parallel between the curfew ordinance and the impact on crime. If you look there at the peak of burglary, residential burglaries was in 2009, we had 41. The curfew was enacted, and it goes down. So we had, I got here in 2010, I call it truth in reporting, we actually reported every crime we had in 2011, so it looked like it went up a little bit, and then it drops back down. So if you're looking for a correlation between the curfew and the burglary, I think that's a pretty significant decrease. Now, is it strictly because of the curfew ordinance? Nobody knows. It's like crime prevention, it's like cops driving through your neighborhood. You can't say it reduces crime, but we feel it does. But I think that's a statistical decrease. It does not appear that our, or it does appear that our current juvenile ordinance works as designed, this ordinance assists with reducing overall crime, juvenile crime in Jersey Village. Also, the ordinance does provide the probable cause for a brief detention during school hours and late at night. While most stops do prove to be within the ordinance provisions, some have proven to be violations of the law. And let me switch programs here real quick. So again, if we look at statistically in '09, when the curfew was enacted, we look, it appears that we have a continual decreasing major crimes index. One that I think is one of the most important is burglary of a motor vehicle. These burglary of a motor vehicles are usually juvenile or younger people that are involved. Look at the decrease between 2009 and 2011, 2012, 2013, 2014, 2015. That's a significant decrease. I cannot stand here and tell you it is because of the curfew, either the daytime or the nighttime curfew, but they're statistically impressive numbers, and it's just a tool that we use. So we go down to the next one. Burglary of a residence. Look at the difference between, again, I call it truth in reporting, we actually had more than that prior to my arrival, but the numbers look good. So 2011, we had 56, or there were way more than that in 2010, that's just the number we have. But look at the steady decline. That's a significant decrease. I cannot stand here and tell you it is because of the curfew, but it's a tool that helps us. We'll go down to the next item. Calls for Service. It's very important to recognize that since 2007, we've had a steady increase in calls for service every year, yet your police department has remained the same size as it has since 2007. We added one person this year, but we're doing 10,000 calls for service more every year. We need every tool we can use to help us fight crime. Arrests, overall arrests, from 2007, let's just go to 2009 when the curfew was enacted. We had 736 arrests, followed promptly by 695, and then the arrests go up from there. So we're preempting the criminals before the crime actually happens in JV, hopefully with that statistic. Filling narcotics arrests, I don't believe curfew really plays a part in that, there are probably some. But then we go to citations, and I think this is where we, we have the, the increase that you see in the contacts with juveniles. 2014 to 2015, there was a two, about 2,000 more tickets written. In 2015, we started the highway projects, and we started getting a lot of complaints about traffic. "Chief, you need to go out there, you need to write more tickets, you need to stop more cars." That's what we did, double the amount. So it would make sense that we would contact double the amount of juveniles. We would have double the amount of tickets and double the amount of arrests of juveniles. That's where I think the discrepancy came in with some of the juvenile numbers. Jump down to traffic stops. Again, this highlights, this illustrates what we did. We go average about 7,000 a year, and then in 2015, when the complaints about traffic started coming in, we, we've almost doubled those as well. There's about 4,000 more there. So those contacts drive, impact the juvenile curfew. The people that are against the juvenile curfew, because, look, look at all these contacts you have with juveniles, those are not because of juvenile curfew violations. So let me add this real quick. Go back to my slide. And again, I apologize for the, if you look over on the right-hand side of the curfew violations, those are curfew citations only issued. So in 2015, the state of Texas passed a House bill that limited the way we contact juveniles. And basically, what they did was they decriminalized truancy in Texas. They took away the criminal penalty for a person skipping school. And if you see in 2015, we issued 42 citations. Those, most, all of those are issued at the beginning of the year as, as kids leave the school for, for lunch or whatever. We issue the citations for a couple of weeks. They realize we're going to issue citations, and then they go back to school. The following year, we issued 41 citations, and this year, we issued 29 citations. So obviously, the word got out that even though it's not a criminal act, the only criminal act now is the curfew violation. It does allow us contact with a juvenile based on the ordinance. The ordinance is what gives us the statutory authority to stop a juvenile that we see out and about, juveniles, anybody under the age of 17. Without the ordinance, we do have laws that are available. Those laws are based upon reasonable suspicion. Reasonable suspicion is interpreted, interpreted by the courts, not by us. So the problem with reasonable suspicion stops is we have to develop some type of reasonable suspicion or probable cause before we make contact with a juvenile. If we have a juvenile ordinance in effect, we can just stop the juvenile. Ascertain where they're going, what they're coming from, if they're homeschooled, or if they're out of regular school. It's usually one or two minutes, they're not put in handcuffs, they're not put in the back of the car, and we go on from there. So I hope that, that kind of summarizes it, and I hope that chart helps kind of explain where we're at with, we wanted to look at specifics for juvenile curfew violations only, so. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief from Counsel?
Yeah, Chief, one thing I wanted to check on, on the stats. I noticed that there were several contacts made with juveniles, usually in the, I don't know, it was the last slide you just showed, but there were no citations. Is it just because there was no violation during that time? Do we, have you, it's kind of a small number, so I wasn't sure if you kind of looked a little further to see why, why, for example, I think there's 22 in 2013, 2014. We didn't have a daytime curfew until 2012.
Sure.
So that would explain the earlier lack of contacts, but at least during that span between 2012 and 2015, there's a number of contacts, and I see zero citations.
Yeah, those contacts, again, are not always a stop for a curfew violation. Those are contacts that we have to count all juveniles. So those contacts could have been a traffic violation, they could have been involved in an accident, we could have made a call to a house, that's just contacts we made with juveniles. So that warrants out, like the last year, well, you used 2018 as an example, there were 110 contacts made with juveniles, and there were 29 tickets, citations issued for, for juvenile curfew. So, yeah, it, it's just, we don't have a way to sort those numbers. That's as close as we could get, but 29 citations out of that many contacts.
This might get a little sensitive. What kind of complaints are, well, just complaints against your officers on any of the interactions with the juveniles have you had? How do you handle it?
It's a great, that's a great question. I've been here eight years, and we have had one informal complaint about a curfew stop here on Lakeview. And it wasn't, it wasn't reduced to paper, and it wasn't, and we, we looked at the stop, and we determined that it was a training issue. It was a newer officer who kind of took a hard-line stance to something we didn't think was a problem, and we fixed it.
So you do have training for these, this type of issue?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the, the ordinance really is not, it's like a park ordinance. Park ordinances are really not put out there to prohibit your use at 10 o'clock at night. It's to prevent vandalism that we repeatedly pay for. It's the same thing with the curfew violation. We're not looking to write citations and, and make money, or write citations and punish people. It merely allows us to contact the person, find out whether they should be in school or at home, wherever, and, and make, let them go on their way.
Chief?
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation. Bobby, as I read this, 2009 is when the nighttime curfew went into effect. Daytime didn't come till 2012. There's lots of new information on this presentation that we didn't have prior to this meeting. Going through this, I, I see there's a lot of comparison of the drop in burglaries. I do see that drop occurs in, when you arrived, and we've had talks about that before, that there's a big difference in our police department from when you arrived and prior to that. And I would thank you for that, it's a noticeable difference. The drop occurs prior to the daytime curfew coming in. In order to apply one of these blanket juvenile curfews, we have to show that we have a reduction in juvenile crime offenders and juvenile crime victims, along with several other things. A lot of the citizens that contacted me were complaining about truancy, which, as you stated, it's been decriminalized, but the state still allows for officers to pick those kids up and bring them back to the school, and have the school enforce truancy. And it's the school district's job to enforce that. If that's something we want to have our officers start doing, then we can look at that, but I don't think that our officers need to be dealing with truancy issues. It's the school district, and we, if we need to, we as a council can lobby that. Going back to this, you recently said that we have a very low juvenile crime victim rate, and that while the ordinance says we're trying to reduce crime victims, that wasn't really your intent, it's to reduce the juvenile offenders. I, I've been struggling with these daytime curfews since I was in elementary school with Houston, city of Houston. I feel that they are ineffective at really accomplishing their goal. I think all this crime statistics that you just showed do paint a, a very beautiful picture for the city. You said several times that they can't, we can't say it's the curfew. I would agree with that. I can't, we can't say that it's not either, really can't. But based on what I saw of the police department prior to your arrival and afterwards, I think those statistics are a real testament more to your ability to do your job than the officers that you have now than so much does the curfew. And I base that more on, there are numerous studies that have been done. The Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention is, their statistics show that juvenile crime is now at an all-time low nationwide. In 2016, the Campbell Corporation Collaboration out of, I think they're out of Norway, but they study juvenile crime nation, worldwide, has found that there's been numerous studies on these different curfews, and all of them have found them to be ineffective. Or, there was a study done that specifically looked here at Houston, and, not Houston, in Texas, and out of the 18 cities that had daytime curfews, they compared crime statistics before and afterwards, and found that none of the cities had a significant decrease in crime. Two of them showed a significant increase in crime, and 16 had no significant change The city of Austin is among several other cities that have removed their curfews recently, and the city of Austin officials came out and said that they saw a 12% drop in juvenile crime victims because of removing the curfew, because they felt there's more witnesses out there. The bottom line is that I believe that the benefit we see is miniscule compared to the cost of the infringement of the rights of juveniles that we have to stop. I, I would cite your presentation, it says a majority of the, the stops that we make related to the curfew are found to be within the exemptions. I want to ask two things that we as a council do. The first is that if the state requires two hearings, those two hearings should be on two different days. And I would ask that we postpone the second hearing to the next special or regular session. Unfortunately, it wasn't scheduled, we had two meetings earlier this week. If, if the state's asking us to do two hearings, then let's put it on two hearings. Unfortunately, I've researched, that means that this curfew is going to expire on Friday. I have no problem with, we go through the hearings, and the votes come out, and we reenact this ordinance, I have no problem with that. But if the hearings should be done on two different days, then we need to make sure that we follow that. The second was to look at crime statistics, and mainly, my second request was going to be a lot of the information you just shared, and so I've looked at, I've voiced my opinion on why I think those crime statistics are what they are.
Chief, let me ask you a question, and I think you may have addressed this, but if you wouldn't mind, repeat a little bit more, I guess, clearly for my purposes. What, what tools does the curfew provide that the state statutes don't already provide, specifically say truancy, criminal trespass? No, what, what tools does the curfew provide that are not, are not available through just other state ordinances and state laws and statutes?
The one, the one big difference is what, what James referred to, being able to pick up a truant, is true. The Education Code does provide us that ability. It says, "Based upon probable cause." There's a huge difference between probable cause and reasonable suspicion. If we have probable cause, we can arrest anybody. What we, what, what I believe the tool for the ordinance helps us to is stop and contact the person. It provides us the statutory backbone, whereas the truancy ordinance, if you read it, that's why it's under the Education Code, it's really written for campus officers and the ability to collect truance and so on. And realistically, that predated the, the decriminalization of truancy, if you will. There's still a penalty, but it's, it's, for all purposes, it's decriminalized. That's not what we're worried about. We're not worried about truance. We're worried about people out committing crime. That allows us to contact those people.
Are we aware of any challenges to these types of curfews, as far as from a constitutional basis or anything like that? In other words, are these, are these curfews consistently under attack, and is it headed towards a, an issue in which they may or may not be deemed constitutional?
You, you drive home a great point. I believe every rule, every law... I believe every rule, every law and every ordinance can be attacked at any given time. That's why we have the tiered court system that we do. The Fifth Circuit has already ruled on this. I guess it could go to the Supreme Court at some point, but we're in good hands now. And I think the Supreme, or the Fifth Circuit has basically sided with that.
So what I want to do is I want to continue to open this up for council questions to the chief and once council has exhausted their questions to the chief, I'm going to make some procedural recommendations this evening. So any questions for chief?
Having been a juvenile in Jersey Village and having been pulled over before, going home from work when I was a kid, working at Kroger, I think it works well. I think, you know, I wasn't up to any trouble, but it was a quick, where are you going? Get home. Okay, yes, sir. Jersey Village is very unique. We, during, you know, during the school year, in the middle of the day, we have 3,000-plus visitors that show up in our city and they have one task and that task is to go to school. And so giving your officers, as you showed in your stats, you're doing way more contacts, you're doing way more stops and with the same amount of officers, over 10 years, you've doubled it. And so I think having that tool is really, really important. Just given the unique, unique nature of our city, where we have, you know, we're an island surrounded by, you know, millions of people and we have visitors come in throughout the day and leave at 2:30 or so. Giving your officers that tool, I think, has proven its worth. There is a recourse within our department, within our city for if something were not to go well, that's with any, I guess, any sort of arrest you do, whether it went well or not, there's a review process. And so, you know, I don't feel like it's ever been abused. I don't feel like it's ever, if there's ever been a misunderstanding, it's been handled. So I'm inclined to support continuing this ordinance and giving your officers the tools they need to just make that initial contact, make sure everything's okay. And that's, that's, I, as a resident of Al Capoco, I know probable cause is very difficult to establish, so.
We appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
I'd like to, I agree with James in that that second public hearing needs to be, I think we've talked about that, probably needs to be postponed. But in regard to juvenile curfew, to your point, I don't know if you can necessarily draw a correlation between the curfew and crime statistics any more than you can draw a direct correlation between increased patrols, better officer training, more patrol hours, better policing techniques. I think these are all a combination of good policing technique. And you guys, as you have weapons and tasers and handcuffs, you have tools to do your job. I view this curfew as a, as just another tool. And not that we're necessarily discussing in this context, but, but I think that's a tool that you guys need. You can enforce it to whatever degree you feel necessary, but it's still a tool that you have available. So I understand there are some challenges in terms of homeschooling and there are always special circumstances to every situation, but by and large, I think it's a tool that's worth having and it's a tool that we need to keep in place. My question to you, chief, is do you want to keep utilizing that tool?
Yes, I do. And if you read closely the ordinance and you look at how many times we actually utilize it, I think it bears witness to the fact that we're not heavy-handed with it. It's not, it is merely a tool in the toolbox. There are provisions for homeschoolers in there. They're all defenses, but we don't even rise to that. I don't believe that we've even fought that in a municipal court because we find out they're a homeschooler, off we go. Our officers are based on shift once a year. We shift bid once a year. So in that year span, we learn pretty much that group of teenagers that are down at the park at 11 o'clock in the morning, we know they're homeschoolers, they're on their break, we drive by and wave. Hundreds of kids a day walk out of that school and never see us. It's not painted in the right picture. It's, we're looking for certain activities and certain things that we need to talk to that person and that's, you know, to ascertain if they're up to nefarious behavior. That's it.
I just want to give another perspective on this. We've been looking at this from criminal statistics, citations and stuff. I grew up in the 60s, I was in the Heights and there's a few people in here that will remember this and it's what they call the Candyman Murders with Dean Corle, Elmer Wayne Henley and David Brooks. They preyed on young juveniles. Basically, I think the count was like 30-something kids. And I have to wonder, I mean, I don't know when or how they made contact with these kids. I knew one of them. I know that his, it would probably be a poor use of the word, parent, to define the people that had him. But, yeah, you know, kids that really didn't have good home lives probably. But when was the contact made? I can't say, but I would suspect it was in the later hours of the day. So the curfew provides a little bit of a protective blanket. It's not just to protect homeowners and others from what criminal acts these children might create, but the issue, I guess, comes in with when does that blanket become something that smothers or it's too protective? And I don't have an answer for that, but I can see how the curfew could be protective and I'll support you on it.
Chief, I was looking at the statute that you referenced from the education code and it does mention probable cause, but it mentions it as a precursor to taking the child into custody, which to me sounds an awful lot like an arrest, same standard. If I remember correctly, and it's been a long time since I took criminal procedure in law school, but if I remember correctly, the standard for a stop is reasonable suspicion. Is that correct?
Pretty much, yes.
Which would be the same standard you would have under the ordinance, correct? You would need reasonable suspicion to determine that you believe that that person is under the age and does not meet one of the affirmative defenses contained in the ordinance.
Correct. I think what is, what is being argued, especially by the homeschool groups, is they're saying that that detention is an arrest. They're not free to go, they're not free, and at that point, you statistically have an arrest. And that's the angle that they're going to attack that from, is they're saying that you stopped my child on the way home from school, ergo, you have an arrest. A reasonable suspicion stop is still looked at that way.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that, I think there's a nuanced difference between the two. In this case, if there is a stop, the officer, of course, at that point is going to make an inquiry in order to determine whether they can develop probable cause. You know, the inquiry probably is going to be, you know, where are you going? Are you in school? How old are you? Do you have ID? All of that would lead to a determination of probable cause and whether to take that child into custody. Under the statute, that, all of that is absolutely required in order to get there. A homeschooler, under the way the ordinance is written today, I realize that the practice of JVPD has been to not pursue charges against or a citation against a homeschooler, but technically, under the ordinance, as it's written, as soon as it is determined that that child is under the age of 17 and that they are not enrolled in a school where they are on break or on summer break or anything of that sort, or if they're not exercising their First Amendment rights or any of the other myriad of affirmative defenses under the ordinance, they are technically subject to citation. Whereas here, if they are in homeschool, they are not truant because they are not, there's no compulsion involved there under state law and therefore, although there would be reasonable suspicion to stop, there would not be probable cause to take them into custody. To me, that seems like a more constitutionally palatable way of dealing with the problem without taking that tool out of your hand.
Yeah. Yes and no. It's not written for us. The education code does not provide us the statutory backbone. It does not.
For the stop or for the arrests?
For the stop or the arrest. Anybody, if you're walking down the street and I walk up and I say, hey, I need you to come over here for a minute, you're submitting to the authority of a policeman, you are technically arrested. That is an extreme difference between an ordinance that provides you the statutory backbone to make that stop and the education code, which provides you the statutory backbone for the arrest. They're completely different. And that's where they're attacking the city ordinance, these advocacy groups that don't want their children stopped, they're attacking that as they're saying, when you stop them, you are making an arrest, which technically you are. So to provide that ability to stop people, if you have the ordinance, there goes that argument. If we don't have the argument, then we have to substantiate reasonable suspicion to the level of probable cause now. We can't stop the student and say, hey, where are you going? What are you doing? Now you submitted to the authority of the uniform and the car, you're technically arrested. So it's a catch 22.
Yeah, and I get that. I just, my concern is that from a constitutional standpoint, the ordinance has more or less said, for anyone under the age of 17 during these hours, on these days, the Fourth Amendment doesn't apply to you. And I think that's probably my biggest problem with it. When we begin to enact ordinances or to reauthorize ordinances, which essentially wipe away a student's fundamental constitutional rights based on the hour of the day, I cannot, I feel like my oath as a public official, that I have undertaken an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of Texas, doesn't allow me to do this without breaking that oath. And that's my major problem with this ordinance as it's written today.
Chief, you said that the ordinance or this curfew law has been upheld by the Fifth Circuit?
Yes.
And I've read that, that decision and I think if we're going to rest our laurels on that Fifth, Fifth Circuit decision, Charles, we may need you and your colleagues a bit more if someone decides to actually challenge it on us. I think the fact that we have not had an issue up until now has merely been the fact that no one has decided that it's worth pursuing it. And I think the fact that you now see more groups that are pressing this sort of issue, that you do see a lot more advocacy groups that are looking for test cases, I think we're practically begging to be that test case and I'd really rather not be that.
The chief's right, the Fifth Circuit ruled this is constitutional. There's actually, if you can prove that you are reducing crime and you are reducing crime victims, there's numerous cases that prove it's constitutional. While I may not agree with that, the courts do. I want to bring this home a little bit with the, I never mentioned homeschooling. It's been a recurring thing that is, I've heard. They may be the groups that typically go after this sort of thing, but as the chief said, there are numerous ways I can articulate the exemptions to meet and get a homeschooler off. I don't see any way that they could actually write a homeschooler unless that, there's very few. We'd have to be digging and I don't think that's the chief's intent at all. I'm going to drive back, my, my original point was that we seem to be stopping more juveniles and finding that they are exempt than maybe what we're preventing. The problem is, it's, it's really hard to deal with the statistics and each one of us just has to make a judgment call. For me, I still feel I think maybe we're, it's not, it's too many, but that's up for each one of you to decide. I don't think any amount of data from staff is going to help that.
Chief, you didn't expect to be standing in front of the Supreme Court making constitutional arguments this evening, did you?
Only had one go so far. I, I would like to, to maybe help this along as we speak. One of the checkboxes that we now check when we write a citation says is, what is your probable cause for the stop? And in the year that we've been doing that, we have not lost a ticket because of that yet. So I think that, that kind of harks to the veracity of our officers and the quality of the stops. Every, and I have to be very careful about this, but we talk about constitution and we talk about defining laws and your duties as, as governing bodies. The constitution doesn't talk about seat belts. It doesn't talk about burglary. It doesn't talk about insurance. It doesn't talk about rape. It doesn't, well, it may murder. But those are things that are left out there for you. But to say blatantly it's a constitutional issue, we're covering that checkbox. We're telling you why we have probable cause for the stop if a citation is issued and I think that's very, very important and it's kind of lost in the mix here. So we're doing a good job at that.
So let me, let me go ahead and rein this back in because there's a couple of things we have on the plate this evening. We have a procedural question and we also have a subject matter question. We have a procedural question with two public hearings as well as the actual ordinance itself and the subject matter contained within the curfew. What I'm going to recommend we do this evening, I also agree that we should have the public hearings on two separate evenings and if, and by doing so, I think that will allow for council and staff to have discussions. For instance, if any council member has any continued concerns about this curfew, we can get some staff feedback. It would also present some opportunities for anybody with concerns with this ordinance to make any recommended changes or any amendments during that time period as well, which then I think council would be fine to take up at the next meeting. Even though this tends, would be, if we were to not take action on this ordinance or actually table it this evening for the next meeting in order to conduct a second public hearing on a different night, I don't think it would be that big of a deal if it lapsed. I'm not too concerned about roving armed bands of children, walking to the city of Jersey Village at noon, keeping everybody cowering in their homes for the next 20 or 30 days. So here's what I'm going to recommend. I think there's enough questions on the ordinance itself between a couple of council members that some more, some additional information could actually help. And so I recommend that those council members with questions with this ordinance, direct those questions to staff, possibly even begin reviewing a, some drafted amendments, ordinance, ordinance amendments that we may be able to take up at the next meeting. By doing so, we can conduct that second public hearing meeting at November's meeting. So how that will procedurally take effect this evening is what I'm going to recommend is that we conduct the first public hearing this evening, in which we'll actually have public hearing comments. We not conduct the second public hearing and then we table the ordinance to the November meeting, in which we also conduct the second public hearing at that November meeting as well. I'd like to get just on that proposal, I'd like to kind of get maybe a quick show of support for that proposal. Does anybody think that's a good idea, a bad idea, or has a better idea?
I appreciate it.
And have this, to table the ordinance to November and to conduct the second public hearing in November as well.
Yeah, I'm for it.
It's fine with me.
I agree.
I'm good, but can I get just 15 seconds on one thing, just to clarify? I just want to make sure, chief, when I talk about the constitutional issues, I want to make sure I'm not in any way suggesting that our officers are doing anything other than their duty. If we are passing an ordinance which is unconstitutional, that's on us, not on your guys.
That was right at 14 seconds. Good job, councilman. All right. So with that being said, we'll move to item two, conduct the first public hearing on the need to continue the city of Jersey Village juvenile curfew ordinance. I now call or the first public hearing on the city of Jersey Village juvenile curfew ordinance, everyone desired to speak at this hearing should complete a public hearing comment card if they have not already done so and present the card to the city secretary. Each speaker shall give his name and address, it will have a proper record of the hearing. Our rules allow you five minutes to present your information. I would however encourage each speaker to be brief and to the point as possible. The purpose of this public hearing is to give all interested parties the right to appear and be heard on the need to continue the city of Jersey Village's juvenile curfew ordinance. Council has heretofore conducted a review of the ordinance and has received a presentation from chief Eric Forrester concerning the city of Jersey Village juvenile curfew ordinance's effects on the community and the problems the ordinance was intended to remedy. I will now call the first person to speak on this, which I have is Nancy Yetter.
Feeling when they're fixing to call your name. Anyway, my name's Nancy Yetter. I live at 16121 Capri Drive. I appreciate our chief's presentation, it was very informative. I've lived here for 26 years, I've raised three boys. We live in a city with a high school in it that we've already commented has thousands of kids. I have picked up the phone and called the police dispatcher before when I've seen kids outside and I mean like a group, middle of the day. I wasn't thinking they were going to knock somebody off or rob a house, but you know, it did bring it to my attention and I didn't think there'd be anything wrong. it did bring it to my attention, and I didn't think there'd be anything wrong. As a parent, I would want to know if my child was walking around the neighborhood when I thought they were at school, or something like that. You talk about the truancy issue being a school district issue, and it is. I almost called the school or the district today to ask, how many truancy officers are there? Now that we have until November, we can do that. I'd be willing to bet there aren't a lot of officers compared to how many campuses there are. So it's not like they're going to be in Jersey Village. You know, we have our own department. That's what everybody says is such an important thing for choosing to live here. I do not see the logic or the common sense in why we would do anything to tie their hands. Thank you.
All right, next speaker, Fred Zehay.
I'm Fred Zehay, eighty-four oh nine Hawaii Lane. I do have a quick question. With you tabling that issue, what happens to the ordinance in the meantime? Does it expire? It's not a good idea. When I first built my house, my first house in Jersey Village in nineteen seventy-eight, I would come out here in the middle of the night after I got off work, and sometimes it'd be dark. And multiple times, I got stopped by the JV police. And I can't tell you how many times I thanked them for that, knowing that they were looking to see what was going on. That's what I see this ordinance as. It is a tool to find things that look out of place. I do not see this as a loss of constitutional rights. They have, the students that may be on homeschool schedules have the right to be out and about if that's what their parents so desire, and they're not going to be written up, handcuffed, and taken off to jail. They will be questioned. And being questioned as a child, I think is a good thing. They can have a good, positive interaction with the police. So I do not see that as an issue. Now, there were some things that came out on Next Door, and we all know how accurate Next Door is. But there were statements about a huge flood of students walking out of the high school in the morning. I was concerned about that. I've been involved historically with JV High School because of my past experience on the school board as a parent, on a parent advisory committee with the high school. I've got a pretty good rapport with Ralph Funk, the principal. I called him and asked him, is there a large flood of students leaving in the morning? He said, no, there's a large flood of students coming into the building. Now, they have about thirty-five hundred students, get the number a little closer to what it is. He said they do have late, and I'm reading an email, and I asked him if anybody has called him and asked him anything about this, any concern. He hadn't had one call. But I asked him about the schedules. He said, we do have, and this is from Ralph Funk, we do have late arrival and early release for seniors. Late arrival seniors do not report until eight fifteen, so they are on campus prior to the nine AM curfew. Early dismissal seniors leave at staggered times depending on his or her schedule. Some depart as early as twelve fifteen. A small wave could leave at twelve forty-five. A third and largest group could leave at one forty-five. They all drive or are picked up by parents, so I don't see them as being too disruptive or burdensome on the community. I think there are reasons that some people maybe see students, and I really feel like chief Forrester is going to learn which ones those are and which ones those aren't. Now, I asked him before the meeting about one of his charts, and it was one that was referred to again on Next Door, that two-hundred-and-sixty-four stops were made. And I asked him, were those really curfew-related? The answer is no. So when it says that there are thirty-two citations, it doesn't mean there were two-hundred-and-sixty-four stops on people that were outside of the curfew. It was far less than that. So it's not, you know, councilman Singleton has an issue that we're making too many unnecessary stops. They were stopped for some other reason. Is that right, chief? So be aware that they're not just going out and stopping kids to stop kids. There's some reason, a traffic reason. We all know, they're young drivers, they're going to do, they're going to roll through a stop sign, they're going to go too fast at a light, whatever. So I am in favor of the curfew, and I think that it gives them a very good tool, and I feel safer being in Jersey Village, knowing that my police can have a method of quickly looking to determine if somebody's out of place. I've called people when they look out of place, adults or children on my street, and I've always been told by the JV police, don't worry about calling us. If it turns out to be nothing, they don't mind. It's the safest way to go. So thank you very much. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Fred. Laurel Calkins.
Actually have a position one way or the other, officer, but I wanted to express my role at the third way, stacking of the two hundred degrees. I'm scared of the procedure, and I'm very grateful that you've gone to type of that and given citizens the opportunity to sit on both sides, and have to be here for a very long, such a long time. Because I'm worried about, see the council, whether the Capitol will violate this year and apply those protections to every citizen, so that our elected officials can just have a boost of the chance to come in. So we see this, we're wanting a more, um, present of support, of support for democracy and process and that. And citizens have the right to come in and know that they're being contacted and provided with the debt. I think there's a depth of ninety-nine percent of the citizens that are there who are being discussing this. And what really concerns me is the press. If we had had both meetings, the stats, what happened together with the prison, two and I was ranked on the agenda tonight, not even a big leap of a, of a conclusion or a figure. The next time somebody wanted to put something else to them, and they'll be sad, and it's going to be much easier because we've got more support. And the next time, if I decide that it's going to be longer, about the same terms for, um, felony.
Rick Faircloth.
Thank you, Rick. I have no more cards, seeing there's no one else desiring to speak on our close this first public hearing on the city of Jersey Village juvenile curfew ordinance. I'll move us into item D three, conduct a second public hearing. As council has indicated, council wishes to place this item on the November meeting, so we will have a second public hearing at the regular city council meeting in next month in November. I'll move us to item D four, consider ordinance number two zero one eight dash one nine. Similarly, as council has expressed, I'm going to recommend that we table this ordinance until the November meeting, looking for a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to table second.
There's been a motion, second, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, abstentions, motion carries, items tabled until the November meeting. I move to item E, budget items. Item E one, discussing, consider approval for motion to set the tax rate for the debt service of tax year of two thousand eighteen. City council members, we have the tax rate before us this evening, looking for any discussion or motion on the item. I think this is a simple motion at this time.
Move to approve setting the debt service tax rate of point one-two-six-zero-nine-nine dollars per one hundred dollar value for the year two thousand eighteen.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Item two, discussing, consider approval of motion to set the tax rate for maintenance and operation for tax year two thousand eighteen, looking for motion or discussion on the item.
I move to approve setting the maintenance and operation tax rate of point six-one-six-four-zero-one dollars per one hundred dollar value for the year two thousand eighteen.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, a second, any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Item three, consider ordinance number two zero one eight dash two zero, providing for the levy and collection of ad valorem taxes by the city of Jersey Village, Texas for the year two thousand eighteen, looking for a motion or discussion on the item.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash two zero, providing for the levy and collection of ad valorem taxes by the city of Jersey Village, Texas for the year two thousand eighteen, providing for the date on which such taxes shall be due and payable, and providing for penalty and interest on all taxes not timely paid. I further move that property taxes be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point seven-four-two-five, which is effectively a one-point-four-one percent increase in the tax rate.
There's been a motion, a second. I now, is there any additional discussion?
Yeah, just a quick comment. The tax rate is actually staying the same, it's just the effective tax rate through various calculations has changed. But the tax rate is remaining the same as it has been for the last ten or so years.
That is correct. Any other discussion on the motion and the ordinance? Now, there's a motion, a second. I will now call upon each council member to take the record vote. Once your name is called, answer aye to signify your approval of the motion, nay to signify your disapproval. Councilmember Mitchell, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Holden, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Warren, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Womahor, state your vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. That will conclude our budget and tax items this evening. Election moves into item F, citizen comments. Citizens who've signed a card and wish to speak to the city council, be heard at this time, in compliance with the Texas Meetings Act, unless the subject matter on the comment is on the agenda of the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council.
Mark Malloy.
Mark Malloy.
The citizens voted to approve two of the three projects. Apparently, the city government learned a lesson because they enacted the stockpiling fund after not getting all the projects approved. I was on city council from the year 2010 to 2012, and per current council member, I was not doing my job because I did not realize the city had set up this unassigned stockpiling fund. The city government now has the ability to bypass the taxpayers' right to vote on what they want the city government to spend their seventeen point two million dollar stockpile fund on. The city government, through their recent news article, is going to spend a large amount of this seventeen point two million dollar stockpile fund on nonessential project, project. The city government is going to say, what projects did you mean? I'm going to reply, two pieces of raw undeveloped property, one they have already purchased and one I think that they will purchase in the near future, with an estimated total acreage of thirty-three to a tune of eight point two million dollars. And a extremely Jersey Village taxpayer subsidized, one hundred and twenty-six acre fenced-in city-operated scarpors to the current tune of an estimated three point one million dollars. So, the total of stockpiled funds that aren't essential projects totals eleven point three million dollars. The city government has learned that if they allow the taxpayers to vote on a large city revenue expenditure, there is a good possibility the issue will not pass. So, I feel that the city government has chosen to not allow the citizens to vote these very large things.
John Baucham. No, you have to speak. Nick Artega. Thank you, Nick. Any other comment cards this evening? All right, seeing none. To our city manager's report, city manager Austin Bleese.
Mayor and councilors, we have the city manager's report in front of you tonight. Staff is happy to ans- answer any questions you might have. We also have two officer introductions. If you don't mind, I'd like to turn it over to the police chief for a moment. Chief?
Mayor and council, I've got two new officers I'd like to introduce tonight. The first one is Tiana Arseneau. Tiana, if you would, stand up, please. Ms. Arseneau is born in Houston, graduated from Willeridge High School. Obtained her bachelor's degree in criminal justice. She was also one heck of a basketball player, I should point out, in college. Worked for Tulsa County Sheriff's Office. She's a very hard worker. She went through the police academy at Houston Community College. Obtained her peace officer license, and we are her first law enforcement job as a police officer, and we're very glad to have her. She's a go-getter, and she's made impact already. Tiana?
The second officer I'd like to introduce is Isaac Gonzalez, also born in Houston, Texas. Isaac graduated from high school for law enforcement and criminal justice, so it's in his blood. Worked for the city of Houston as a telecommunicator oper- telecommunications operator. Worked for Harris County Toll Road Authority, so he's been around law enforcement most of his life. Graduated from Houston Downtown, University of Houston Downtown Peace Officer Academy. Were also his first law enforcement, police officer job. Isaac Gonzalez.
Mayor and council, unless there's any other questions or anything on the city manager's report, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Welcome to the force, officers. Glad to have you here. Any questions for our city manager? All right, moving to the consent agenda. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda? Seeing none, looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Put us on the regular agenda. Item one, consider ordinance number two zero one eight dash two one, meaning the code of ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas at chapter sixty-two, taxation, article one, and general section twenty-sixty-two dash six, to increase the residential homestead exemption, providing for severability and providing for repeal. Councilmember Bobby Warren.
Thank you, mayor. My proposed ordinance before council tonight would increase the residential homestead exemption from eight percent to twenty percent. It's important to provide some history concerning property taxes in Jersey Village to better understand why this is the right time to provide homeowners with a tax break. While the current tax rate of seventy-four and a quarter cents per one hundred dollars of taxable property value has been in place now for at least eleven years, the value of properties in the city have risen significantly during that time. As a result, property tax revenues have skyrocketed. The last time council increased the homestead exemption was two thousand and three. Greg might remember that, he was on council at the time, when it was raised from four percent to the current eight percent exemption. At that time, the tax rate was sixty-seven and one-half cents per one hundred dollars of taxable property value. Property tax revenue at that time was four point two million dollars. In twenty-seventeen dollars, that would be approximately five point six million dollars. During the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen fiscal year, the city collected over eight million in property taxes alone. That is a forty-two point eight percent increase between two thousand and three and two thousand and seven, when accounting for inflation. Sales taxes have been no different. In two thousand and three, the city collected nearly two point seven million in sales taxes, which would be over three point five million dollars in twenty-seventeen dollars. For the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen fiscal year, the city collected four point two six million dollars in sales tax revenues. That is a twenty-one point seven percent increase, when accounting for inflation, from two thousand and three to twenty-seventeen. This has not been a slow climb to reach this point, and homeowners have taken the hardest hit recently. Looking solely at single-family residences, the average home in Jersey Village has seen their property tax bill from the city rise from an inflation-adjusted one thousand four hundred fifteen dollars in twenty thirteen to one thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars in twenty seventeen. That is a nearly twenty-five percent increase in taxes collected by the city from an individual average homeowner in just four years. In twenty fifteen, when I first raised this issue as a citizen, I was reassured by multiple members of council, many of whom are now my colleagues, that this was a temporary increase that was made necessary by the likely dip in sales tax revenues expected due to the disruption of businesses along Highway two ninety during construction. Rather than witness a decrease in our sales tax base, however, we have seen a steady increase over time with an additional one point three million in annual sales tax revenues collected by the city in twenty seventeen over twenty fifteen. For calendar year twenty eighteen, the Texas comptroller has reported paying over three point nine million dollars to the city's general fund through sales taxes, through the one point five percent that goes into the general fund, which represents a nearly five percent increase in sales tax revenues compared to this time last year. That is phenomenal growth, and all signs are that it's sustainable. Moreover, we recently completed the redemption of certificates of obligation issued to finance movement of utilities and easements related to construction on Highway two ninety. By paying this debt back early, we have saved money on interest and reduced our annual debt service payments by over eight hundred and thirty-three dollars from last year. Most of these facts should be sources of pride for the city council. Steadily increasing property values and sales tax revenues are all signs of a city that is on the rise, well-managed, business-friendly, and clearly a community where people want to live. It is time, however, for us to recognize that the windfall we received in twenty fifteen was not intended to be permanent. Construction on U.S. Highway two ninety in Jersey Village is substantially complete. Our sales tax revenue is clearly in no danger of evaporating anytime soon. If anything, in this thriving economy, it's likely to grow at an increasing rate. The increase in the residential homestead exemption would cause only a modest impact to our revenues. City staff estimates that it would cost us five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year to start and would not impact the budget until twenty twenty. That is approximately three percent of the total expenditures budgeted for this fiscal year. It would, however, reduce the tax bill for the typical homeowner by thirteen percent. It would put two hundred and fifty dollars back into the pockets of the average household in Jersey Village. That may not seem like a lot, but I'm willing to bet that there are many families in Jersey Village for whom a two hundred and fifty dollar annual savings could be put to pretty good use. Some have questioned whether this, whether this proposal would in any way impact the ability of the city to implement its current capital improvement plan. After looking at our revenues and expenses, including those proposed capital investments, it's clear that none of these projects would be placed in jeopardy. Using a conservative assumption of a one percent annual increase in property tax revenues, three percent annual increases in sales tax revenues, and three percent annual increases in operating expenses, we could complete our planned capital investments in a timely manner while never touching our ninety-day reserve. Now, before anyone on council points out that our current policy is to maintain a one hundred and fifty-day reserve, that's not actually true. A review of the language of the two thousand and seven resolution which created the facility's reserve balance shows that the one hundred and fifty-day operating level was merely used as a trigger to move funds into the facility's reserve balance. It does not create a new general fund reserve level, which remains at ninety days, which is consistent with Governmental Accounting Standards Board recommendations. Finally, let's discuss the elephant in the room, or more appropriately, the elephants in Austin. Our own representatives in the legislature, Senator Paul Bettencourt and Representative Gary Elkins, have both sought statewide caps on municipal property tax revenues. Earlier this year, Governor Greg Abbott endorsed the concept, calling for a two point five percent cap on property tax revenue growth, requiring approval of two-thirds of voters to override that cap. I disagree with their approach, not in substance, but on principle. I believe that Jersey Village has a right to govern itself with minimal interference from Austin, the same way that Texas has a right to govern itself with minimal interference from Washington, D.C. But based on the numbers I cited earlier, we have done little to dissuade them that their proposal isn't necessary. And yet, despite their best efforts over the last several sessions, they have been unsuccessful in imposing a cap. Based on the activities in Austin, it's likely that if any proposal is passed and placed on the governor's desk, it's not likely to be as stringent as Governor Abbott's proposal. That said, if a property tax revenue cap is imposed, we will manage just fine whether we pass my proposed ordinance tonight or not. If a true emergency arises which requires the approval of voters to override a cap, I have the utmost faith in my neighbors to make the right decision. I know that some of my colleagues on council may be inclined to vote against the pro- this proposal out of an abundance of precaution, a mistaken belief that our reserves and our revenues aren't stable enough to give homeowners their first tax break in over fifteen years. I could not possibly disagree more. All revenue streams have been on an upward trend for years now, and we have reduced our debt payments. If we are not on solid enough footing to provide a tax break now, I fail to see what conditions would be necessary before we will act to stem the tide of rising property tax bills. I look forward to engaging in a discussion of this proposal.
Any questions for Councilman Warren?
I, I favor increasing the homestead exemption. I just have a question that came up every single time that I was considering this over this month, was why, why tonight and why now? Why, you know, we're making a decision tonight that impacts fiscal, it doesn't, if we pass it tonight or, or not, i- if it's passed tonight, doesn't impact our current budget, it impacts fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And those, those talks happen traditionally every single year during our budget sessions in the summertime, where we spend days talking about, you know, these, these, these things. And so, I don't understand why we're making a decision on FY twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, tonight, when this could dovetail into our, our budget discussions when we normally do.
Sure, and you're right. We, if we make a decision tonight, or if we make a decision in the coming months, it does not in any way delay the earliest time that, that that tax rate could go into effect. Unfortunately, we did miss the, we did miss the, the deadline to be able to have this impact twenty nineteen bills. And honestly, earlier this year, when we first discussed it, it looked like there was less support for it, that it didn't look like it was gonna be able to get the votes necessary to pass. I think that there have been a lot of changes since our retreat in May that have started to turn the tide, and even if it's not something that we can necessarily vote on tonight, if, if people need a little bit more time, I wanted to go ahead and, and put something on the table, on the agenda, something tangible that people could see more than just talk, so that we could, we could actually have a thorough discussion of this. You know, I, I think that when you see a lot of the progress that we've made, we, we have seen, you know, we've seen our property tax revenues continue to stay steady. They have not grown at quite the rate that they did the last couple of years, but, but they have continued to grow. Sales tax revenue has done fantastic the last couple of years. And now, we have, you know, hopefully in the coming months, although I'm not relying on it in, in making this proposal, but with Argos USA moving in, they may have already signed the lease, so we, we don't know, we haven't heard back for sure, but, but our understanding was that they were gonna sign the lease with the Dillard properties on Friday. If that's the case, we have a new tenant who's, who potentially could contribute up to, or possibly even more than a million dollars per year. In all of my calculations, I've assumed that that number is way lower, just to be on the safe side. I've tried to take a lot of things at a, a much more conservative level, a- and, and based on all of those numbers, I just, in my mind, I have a hard time justifying us continuing to take taxpayer dollars to pad things even more, just so we have an additional safety blanket. I, I feel like every time I look at the numbers and I do the calculations, I cannot, in my mind, justify
the numbers and I do the calculations, I cannot, in my mind, justify having what is essentially a reserve, in addition to a reserve, in order to have some sort of cushion. I feel like, based on all of the accounting standards that apply to municipalities across the country, we already have more than sufficient cushion in our reserve. You know, we don't even touch that. So, that's the reason why I'm bringing it tonight, because I feel like it's time to start that conversation.
Okay. I appreciate that your calculations are conservative in just about every manner, but in that same vein, would it not be conservative to wait until we have our traditional budget discussions on FY twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, to really understand? And the reason I'm saying this is because, you know, homestead exemption is the best possible way to impact the homeowners directly in their pockets. And that's, this is a tool that the city, one of the few tools that we have to really make that impact. And so, I appreciate that this is the tool that we are looking to manipulate. However, in the calculations of the reserve fund, the trend in your numbers and in the numbers that I've seen are all down, and there's no plateau. You know, we get as low as, as a million dollars or so above the ninety-day reserve, but that's, that trend is down, and it stops right there. We don't, we haven't had a discussion.
Well, that's because, and that's exactly right. It's because our level of capital improvement investments have been off the chart. Now, part of that reason is because there have been a lot of capital improvement funds that have gone unspent from prior years. So, we have a lot of projects that are delayed, which is why we have such a substantial amount of capital improvement funds recently. But there's two things we have to keep in mind. Number one, regardless of whether we enact this homestead exemption ever or not, that's not sustainable anyway. Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars does not stem the tide of that. We could not keep up that pace beyond the current capital improvement plan. Realistically, we are looking at probably one to two million dollars in capital investments per year, assuming that those projections continue. So, I think that saying five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year somehow makes or breaks that, or in any way jeopardizes it, but then doesn't jeopardize it if we keep it the same, I think is, I think that is not consistent with the numbers. So, the reason I bring it now is because every single night, and this is not just a thing where all of a sudden during the budget process, we have some clarity that we don't possess throughout the year. This is a constant discussion regarding projections, regarding economic growth, regarding property values, all of these things. So, I don't think that we're going to, you know, you could say about any given time, a month later, we're gonna know more. Well, that's true. Two months later, we're gonna know even more. Three months later, we're gonna know even more. But I don't think that there's going to suddenly, you know, unless there's something very specific that we know is gonna take place between now and the budget hearing that is unique to this time period, I don't know that there's any advantage to waiting versus going ahead and doing it now.
Yeah, I'm listening to the discussion between you and Andrew, and I believe Andrew has a point. We just had our budget discussions like three months ago, and you agreed, you brought up the, raising the exemption at that point, and you agreed with us that it'd be responsible, considering all the projects we had going on and the expenditures we were looking at, it would be a responsible thing to do to not increase it at this point in time. Now, having said that, we're not gonna be impacted until the next budget term, a year from now, or next June, July, when we have budget discussions again. So, my point here is, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't, why I shouldn't make a secondary motion to table this, table the action on this motion until next June or July. It just makes sense to wait, and we have our budget discussions, and it's handled during the context of all of our expenditures and revenues.
You know,
I'm gonna make that secondary motion at this point.
Gary, let me go ahead and make a recommendation from the chair. Let me go ahead and get the rest of the council members to make a discussion. I'll have a procedural recommendation as well for you.
And let me clarify what I said. The reason I agreed to wait was because, and I think this is, we all shared this misconception. I think Greg had made the recommendation during the budget retreat, that we focus, instead of focusing on our, on a tax break, that because we had debt, let's focus on paying the debt back more quickly. What we found out, I mean, I wasn't aware of it, I don't know if anyone else was, was that bonds and certificates of obligation aren't like your common consumer loans. You can't just pay them back early whenever you decide you've got free cash. They're only callable or repayable after a certain date, based on the terms of the bond. And we found out that, I think the next bond that's callable is in 2022, somewhere around there. So, we're talking about, we can't, even if we had cash to pay off our debt, it turned out we couldn't make any payments ahead of time for four or five years. So, that was my mistake. If I'd known that at the time, I would have pressed the issue even more, because I, at the time, I thought, well, yeah, it makes more sense to pay off debt if we're able to. And I would totally agree with that today if that were an option, but it's not.
Well, in order to pay off debt, you have to build cash reserves. So, regardless of whether it's 2021 or 2022, it's still a good viable plan. Cash reserves are savings accounts. It is flexibility, allows the city to do things that you normally can't do. For instance, the pay-as-you-go programs, in my time as council, has kind of been a goal. Let's get to a pay-go program where the city has the flexibility to do a project or not do a project, issue debt or not issue debt, and with the desire not to issue debt. The fact that we were able to acquire the easements on two ninety was a result of excess, not excess, but fund balance. And when we look at fund balance, we don't necessarily talk about excess fund balance. We don't, shouldn't talk about being overtaxed. The way I look at it is that we, as a council, have underperformed. If you look at our budgets now, and if you say that we have unprecedented revenue levels, that's true. But guess what? We have unprecedented expenditures as well. We have all the things, all the initiatives that council wants to do, the project across two ninety, which, which is probably a different discussion that we've had. The reason that we're able to do that is because we've built cash reserves, we've built in flexibility to allow us to do that. These types of discussions need to take place during a budget process, where you can look at the CIP plan on a five- and ten-year basis, and really look at projects you need to put into that plan. We have around-the-street improvements that we haven't even addressed that needs to be addressed. We've done one, two, and we need to do a third. Five, eight, ten million dollars, we don't know because we haven't identified them. We need to do it in the context of the comprehensive plan. We've cherry-picked things out of the comprehensive plan. Now it's time to go back and see what else we need to do. I'm certainly not opposed to, look, we all benefit. We don't get a bonus if we collect more money. We get extra cookies in the, before the meetings, that's about it. So, we all benefit from homestead exemptions. I'm not necessarily opposed to a homestead exemption, but it needs to be implemented the right way. What I would also suggest is that we don't, the first place we need to look really is the over-sixty-five disabled exemptions. Over-sixty-five disabled are people that are most likely on a fixed income, limited resources, and would benefit far more than a young, upwardly mobile family. I think homestead exemption is something we need to look at, and more importantly, the over-sixty-five and disabled we need to look at.
And let me address that real quick, because I consider that as well. You know, we have currently a fifty thousand dollar over-sixty-five exemption. That is above average for Harris County. We currently have an eight percent homestead exemption. That is well below average for Harris County. Also, I thought that if we're going to actually enact our first tax break that we have in fifteen years, that we ought to do it in a way that benefits the most people. Everyone has pitched in on this surplus. And, well, and let me finish.
If you're, no, well, you interrupted me, I interrupted you, so.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
If, no, I wasn't. But if you go by that same context, let's just lower the tax rate, and let's benefit the businesses that contribute far more than the residential. As a business, a former business owner in Jersey Village, I contributed taxes. I did not, you're not up here advocating tax breaks for me as a business owner. So, I think what, if we've learned nothing else from this discussion is that tax reductions need to be done in the context of a budget process. It needs to be a well-thought-out process, where we can look at every aspect of the budget and place those tax incentives in those tax breaks where they can benefit people the most. So, I don't think, and I don't want an agenda for tonight, it's the appropriate time and place to do that. I'm not opposed to, to increase in the homestead exemption. I'm opposed to it being on the agenda this evening, in this context.
Before I, I just want to make, you're done, correct?
I'm done.
Okay. My apologies. The issue here is that you, you know, we have, and I have a problem with the idea that there's no such thing as a excessive surplus, that there's just a lazy city council, you know, as if the idea that city council's job is to try to spend every cent that it gets. I don't think that's the case. There is such a thing as an excessive surplus, though. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board has set forth guidelines that says anything over a hundred and eighty-day reserve in the general fund is excessive. That is their word, not mine, excessive. And we have been sitting on an excessive pile of money for a long time. Now, that being said, I agree with you that there are a lot of projects that needed to be done. But in 2015, when I was sitting out there with all of them, and I was asking city council about the fact that we had a seventeen percent increase in property tax revenues, when we had been chugging along at a much lower level for quite some time, quite successfully, still stockpiling cash, I was told at that time that the reason that it was done was so that we had enough money to be able to weather the potential turbulence of two ninety construction, because there was a concern that it would affect sales taxes. It didn't. It did quite the opposite. Sales taxes have been skyrocketing. So, if that was the justification now, I feel like every step along the way, there's some justification. The legislature is the boogeyman that's gonna take away our ability to raise taxes at will, that we have all of these projects that we have to do, that there's two ninety construction, that it's not the right time. We have been waiting for a long time to see a tax break of some sort, fifteen years to be exact. In that time, there's been no increase in the homestead exemption. The tax rate has gone up. Value of properties have continued to go up with very little focus on how that is going to be managed in the long term. And I agree, we do need to know if there are projects that are not on the CIP that should be, because there's no way for us to plan for these things, and there's no way for us to be able to set tax policy in the long run if we don't know what all those things are. So, I'm gonna rely on the fact that our CIP does in fact reflect our long-term plans for capital investments, and that's what I use to make this calculation.
Well, I don't mean to imply that we have a lazy, lazy city council. I've been on city council for quite some time. It'd be derogatory comment against myself. But we have a surplus, not because of what we've done. We have a surplus because of what we haven't done. Now, the public comes into this facility and says, hey, this is a nice facility, there's nothing wrong with it. Why do we need a new city hall? Very few people actually walk back into the heart and soul of the city. And if you did, people would have a different perspective, and I would encourage city staff to have an open house of the city offices. Well, there's lots of ways to accomplish something. But again, I go back to surplus is flexibility, and not opposed to, and we've done a great job in reducing our surplus earmarking certain things, and I think we need to earmark that surplus for other things. Again, in the context of a budget process, in the budget, in the context of a comprehensive plan review, and a CIP review, not an arbitrary comment at, or an arbitrary item agenda at this particular meeting.
I mean, here's the thing. We're setting our sales tax rate outside of the budget context, right? We don't even have, when we budget, we don't have a complete picture as to what property taxes are gonna look at, look like, because we're still waiting on contested properties. You know, there's a lot of uncertified values. We, throughout the year, have a sense of what is happening with all of the variables that go into our budget. It's not like we walk into the budget process and we're surprised by what's on the table. We don't walk into the budget retreat and we're shocked by everything that comes on the table. So, I think it's, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that prevents us from at least seriously considering this, when we're talking about three percent of the budget. I'm not asking for a ten percent tax break, or a fifteen percent tax break, although I have no problem with people demanding that, because again, that's how much their city government has continued to take in, in addition to what they were operating on perfectly fine in 2015. I'm only saying that I think it's important for us to show people that we are taking into account the fact that they have taken on an extraordinary burden for many years, and this is, but a small step. Trust me, when we get into the budget, depending on how much property values go up, we can talk about the tax rate at that time, and I'm certainly gonna be open to that. This is just the first step. And you're right, we are able to do a lot of the things we are able to do because of the surplus. But when does that stop? I mean, when we get done spending all that CIP, what's gonna happen? It's just gonna go right back up, probably at a higher rate than it did before.
There's a lot more CIP, and I'll make two more points, and then I'll stop. I was quite surprised that we spent five point two million dollars on land across two ninety. So, when you talk about not having surprises in the budget, I would respectfully disagree. That was a big surprise, and that's not something we planned on six months ago. It was certainly a contingency, but never did I realize or anticipate from the beginning that it would actually come to fruition, and that we would actually make that cash outlay. The other thing is that, I talk about the over-sixty-five, I talk about disabled. One of the other things I'd like to look at is staff retention and staff pay. I would like to take some of that excess money and put it into staff development, make Jersey Village a premier place to work. You know, if people, we need to set an example for the rest of the small cities. So, if we're talking about decreasing revenue, it limits our ability to do other initiatives. Let's talk about initiatives and decide what we can afford and what we can't afford, and then look at what we want to implement in terms of exemptions. And I'm through with my comments.
That's, that's an interesting goal, Greg. Bobby, I campaigned on this. You know that I support the idea of going to twenty percent. I have to agree with some of the people on council that it's odd that it's tonight. I asked the city manager beforehand, how long do we have to make this decision? Setting the tax rate is something that normally happens tonight. Setting the tax rate is something that normally, closer? Ah, there you go. Novice sitting in the seat, you know. So, setting the tax rate is something that normally happens at this time of year. We have a property across the freeway that we just bought that we're pretty sure we're gonna be offloading, but that hasn't happened yet. We have FEMA grants that we're pretty sure are gonna be coming in. We don't know that for sure yet. Argos, you bring up a valid point, and this is excellent use of the Argos money, but they haven't signed the lease yet. And so, I have a hard time with doing it tonight. But I do agree, it needs to be done before May. We, there's no reason we can't do this in January and February in order to show that we really do mean when we say we're gonna do this.
Let me go ahead and jump in real quick. All right, so I've heard, I've heard a lot of good comments, and, you know, my personal take, of course, is I think I'm very supportive of tax relief. I think a lot of us are. I think I'd like to see the city pursue it. But let's, but let's all realize right now what the city of Jersey Village and always has been. We are a high-service providing city, especially for the size of our population. We've always provided a high-level services, and fortunately or unfortunately, those come at a cost.
Right.
However, it's incumbent upon city council to evaluate those costs, trim where we can, provide the services that the citizenry has expected, but at the same time, try to evaluate property tax relief where it can be. However, this is a major policy decision. Changing our tax exemption rate is akin to setting our tax rate. It's akin to setting our budget. And all of those items are vetted for months and evaluated for months, over many nights and many meetings by many people. To make this decision tonight, I think, would be very problematic. And a major decision like this really needs to be vetted. It really doesn't. It really does. You know, there's, you made a comment, Councilman, that by raising this tax exemption rate, it's clear, the word, the phrase was clear that it would not put any of our projects in jeopardy. I don't think it's clear. And I think that's the problem that a lot of my colleagues on council have, is that it's not clear, and that they're, and that they would be, they would be struggling with making the decision this evening, simply because the impact on the vast amount of projects we have to do is not necessarily clear. And, I mean, I think we all have a pretty good eye just on the big projects. Flood mitigation, that's millions of dollars every year. Home elevations, the city's gonna kick percentage of home elevations. We don't know how much it's gonna be. We don't know how much it's gonna be the course of the next several years, right? That's a huge chunk of money. Facilities, Councilman Holt, and the city hall. We don't know exactly to what extent our facilities are gonna be improved, how much it's gonna cost, and how we're gonna pay for it. Economic development, we've talked about the property across two ninety. We feel very confident that we'll be recouping that money soon. That hasn't materialized yet. It was, it was, it was a very prudent decision, it was a sound investment, but it also impacted our cash flow. We, but it also impacted our cash flow. Nick Artega made a comment, and I'm glad he did this evening, because one of the, up until this last, up until the flood, our A-number-one-biggest CIP expenditure had always been street projects, four, five, six million dollars at a hit. And a lot of the residents have benefited from street rehabilitation programs. We have not seen that on our CIP. As a matter of fact, it needs to be back on our CIP. We should not lose, we lost momentum on, on street improvements when we, when we pivoted our attention to flood mitigation, namely BERM, Wall Street improvements, and things like that. We delayed street improvements, and that's not been a focus or a discussion point in the last budget. So we need to reevaluate and continue to put emphasis on street improvements. Those are just some big things. And Councilman Holden made a really good comment about having reserves gives us flexibility and freedom to provide for the citizenry, especially when things come up that we don't expect. When we did the easements along 290, we, we purchased the easements, and we were expecting for us to win the lawsuit against TaxDOT. But nonetheless, we need to be prepared for us to not prevail in that lawsuit and for the city to actually pay for those easements. Purchasing of those easements was the correct choice, but fortunately, the city had the reserves to weather the blow if the TaxDOT litigation didn't go our way, which it unfortunately did not. So those reserves were extremely helpful in that regard. When it comes, when you were talking about the auditing and the evaluation of the reserves amount, I remember distinctly the auditors applauding us for having those reserves, as a matter of fact, and it actually attested to the strength and the credit rating of our city. So we were actually applauded for having those reserves and managing them, managing them well. With all, so everything I've got to say, and I mean, other council members have said in different ways, right? And I also wanted to my comments this evening by applauding the effort to evaluate the homestead exemption, and I think it's an effort we need to continue. And I know Councilman Womackhorst had wanted to possibly table this idea. I think Councilman Singleton mentioned maybe a meeting at a later date to evaluate this. And what I would like to do, and then I'll give you the floor, councilman, is I want to throw out a possible remedy or possible discussion, possible proposal this evening. I think that we should continue to have this discussion. I think we should have this discussion in advance of our budget meeting, as a matter of fact, right? There are a couple of really, there are really a handful of really important unknowns that I think will be known after the first of the year. One, of course, is our grant money. I think we'll have a better perspective of the economic development conditions on Jones Road. I think we're going to have a better idea of the Argus sales tax revenue. I think there's some key unknowns right now that we don't have that's going to, that's going to cause myself and a lot of council members to struggle with changing the tax exemption rate at this time. What I would recommend, and I think this is going to be a very useful exercise, because Councilman Holden's advocated this for a while, we need to get a much better grasp on our capital improvement projects, and even more specifically, how are we going to pay for them? You know, I just got through talking about how important street repair is. The fact that we had major street repair was extremely helpful during major flooding events, and I think we need to continue to pursue that goal. Street repair, facilities repair, flood mitigation. There are a number of other things that I haven't even discussed that are on the CIP. We need to have a comprehensive evaluation of these important projects that the citizens in this, in this city absolutely need, and how we're going to pay for them. Now, and in the discussion of that, and in the evaluation of that, let's talk about what if we cut the home exemption to 12%? What if we did the home exemption at 15%? What if we did a full 20%? How would that look? I'm going to recommend that we start putting, crunching some numbers. Let's have some workshops starting in January and February. Let's get these numbers going. And as a matter of fact, it'll actually make staff's job easier when budget comes around, because we'll have those numbers. And then we'll have a much better picture at that time about what amount of revenue, loss of revenue we can sustain in light of all these important projects. So, councilman, that's a recommendation I'd like to throw out for anybody's comment. But nonetheless, the floor is yours. Now yield the balance of my time.
So I'll make this quick. First, one thing I meant to mention when we had the discussion. I know we've got a very ambitious CIP. Based on what I've seen in the past, and it's no fault of their own. I mean, there are only so many members of staff here. They've got a ton of stuff they're doing, and on top of that, they're trying to handle capital investments. I appreciate the fact that we have a very ambitious CIP budget. I'll believe that we actually execute it on time when I see it. And again, it's no reflection on them. They're doing as much as they can, probably more than we should ask of them. But it, there's just only so much bandwidth. It's not about the amount of money. It's about the amount of people. I don't think we should increase staff just so we can spend more money. That's silly. But I think that that's going to be the bottleneck, and that we're not going to spend money on capital expenditures at the clip that we think we are. That being said, I am open to your proposal, to your, to your idea, but I do want to ask, while we're on the record, while open meeting Zach, totally compliant, we got everyone here, and I know the score, James, if we get to January, and if Argos USA revenues look somewhat close to what the, the projections were, would you be comfortable with that $550,000 hit created by the homestead exemption?
That's an unfair question, Bobby. We've talked about crunching the numbers, and you've isolated down to one, one trigger, one variable.
Well, but if we have, it only takes one. If we have...
It's a dynamic process. And why study it if you're going to narrow it down to just one number?
I think my stance is well documented in a lot of places.
So, so here's the thing. If, if, if by January, if it's apparent that the sales tax revenues for Argos are matching the, the projections, and that we're going to have an extra million dollars in our general fund, again, I don't understand how we could possibly, in good faith, continue to insist that we cannot implement a tax break that costs $550,000.
Councilman, let me, let me, let me... You still haven't identified all the CIP projects.
Yeah, councilman, let me jump in here real quick on that. Sorry about that, Greg. Look, I think we have a very collaborative, potential work session that we're discussing right now. Let's not pollute the collaborative discussion that we're entering into tonight by, by causing council members to get on the record with things they may or may not be able to vote on, with information they don't have. They, and to Greg's point, which I rudely interrupted him on, you know, we have, you know, we can't pin council members down to one factor in light of all the other factors that we've yet to identify. So I think that, I think that it's not a good tact for us to start pinning down council members on specific items. I think a really good tact was for us to continue kind of pursuing this collaborative effort, kind of bringing, you know, taking the spirit and the interest that you've brought forth and the need that you've brought forth this evening. Let's take that forward. Let's schedule a workshop in January, and let's tackle this on in a much bigger, broader perspective.
And that's fair enough. And it was not my intention to, to try to pin someone down. My, my, instead, what I was trying to get a sense of at this point was exactly what people need in order to get there. And I kind of wanted, because here's the thing. My concern is this. If we get into January, and we're going to be right, because we've kind of done this dance. We've gone from May, and we talked about needing a better sense of exactly what capital expenditures are coming up. That, all the way back in May, I remember Greg brought it up, saying, hey, we need a better sense of exactly what expenditures are coming. What is the plan for the long term? And I thought we got that. I thought that's what we had. And I guess what I'm hearing now is that we don't. So now here we are in October. By January, are we going to have a better sense of exactly what our expenditures are? Or are there going to be as many unknown, known unknowns? Are there going to be more known unknowns? Or is it going to be a lot of unknown unknowns as to what expenditures might come to the line? Because the idea that we have, that we don't know how much something's going to cost, and we don't know, it, my problem is that it kind of runs into a, a, a continued, just, just carrying on as, as if this project may cost twice as much, or three times as much, or however much it is. So I, yes, I would like to get a better sense of what we are going to spend, but I hope that at some point, this council can get to a point where it can say, this is enough information for us to actually start planning, not just in terms of expenditures, but also revenues, and starting to actually tailor our revenues based on our needs, not just based on what if.
Let me, let me throw a question to the city manager real quick. Mr. City Manager, you've heard this discussion this evening. Are you the director of finance and staff? So again, I'm, I'm hopefully seeing kind of a consensus around meeting in January for a workshop to, you know, assuming we have some better numbers. How do you guys feel about putting a workshop together? It is, do you guys have enough direction? Will you guys need to, to Councilman Warren's point about getting some additional information, specifically what needs to be evaluated? Are you, are you and your staff comfortable with a workshop in January to evaluate some of these things? And do you have the information you do, you need for us to have a workshop of that magnitude?
Mayor, I think we understand what the council's looking for. I would, if there are specific things that individual councilors would like to see as part of that workshop, information provided, that type of thing. Please give me a phone call tomorrow, stop by, send me an email. Let me know the specifics of what you want to see. But I think based upon the discussion here tonight, we can have a workshop for the third Monday of January.
And also, and Kevin, if you have information to provide on this, are there items that probably right now, based on what we know today, should be on the CIP budget and just aren't because they weren't an issue or a known issue back in, in May, June, and July?
Every year, we do the capital improvement budgets for four years out, and then greater than four years out. And there's going to be things that are out there that, greater than four years today, that, you know, are going to come up at some point in the time. If we, if there's a specific timeframe that the council wants us to look at longer or greater than the traditional four years that we do in the budgeting process, that'd be helpful to know as well.
So I guess maybe, let me put, put the question that way, then. What information does everyone need to be comfortable making a decision as to whether a increase in the homestead exemption would be appropriate?
Let me go ahead and make some suggestions on how that information will be ascertained. I'm going to recommend, look, so here, so I think unless I see any obvious disagreement, I think everybody's on board with a January workshop. Do I see any visible disagreement with that from anybody, just informally? Okay, look, if there's individual things that council members want to see from a budgetary standpoint, if there's anything that council members want to see from a revenue standpoint, send it to the city staff. Let's, let's, let's send individual needs, data, recommendations for our staff to evaluate, and we can, we can put, we can, and we can, we can have multiple workshops. I know we all, we all love workshops. We can have more. Look, and to be honest with you, all joking aside, I expect there'll be several. I expect we'll have one workshop, and then we'll decide to have a second one, probably a third one, maybe even a fourth one, right? Because what, what, you know, what we're doing is we are doing, to Greg's point about how we haven't done some of these projects, and some of them have been lagging, we, we are embarking on a in-depth detail of the capital improvement requirements of the city and how we're going to fund them. And I think that is a worthwhile endeavor.
Yeah, and I agree. I just want to make sure that we finally get to a point where everyone has enough information available to be, to feel comfortable to make this decision. And, and I would encourage everyone, I am willing to meet every night, Saturdays, Sundays, however many it takes, so that everyone on this council is prepared to commit, whether, and I'm fine if it's against or for, but at least where you can say, yes, I have enough information to make a decision.
No, Bobby, I think at this point, Robert's rules of order would be a little helpful, because I don't think further communication is really going to make that much of a difference.
That second would have been great.
I think that we're all on board here. We all want to see a change. There's a couple things a few of us want to just make sure of. I just don't see the rush up until January, February. Absolutely. The clock is ticking.
And I apologize if I'm getting a little worked up about this, but I feel like it's a second verse, same as the first. We kind of got, we, I feel like we're getting in circles. So I just, just emphasizing for me that this is kind of getting to a boiling point.
So, so what's our recommendation for our agenda this evening? I'm going to recommend we don't take any action on this item. City staff, let's look at, evaluate some dates in January, and you guys will be crunching some numbers. In the meantime, take in recommendations and suggestions and inquiries from individual council members. We will reconvene, issue in-depth in January, councilman.
Just, just as a procedural matter to ensure that this kind of stays on the field rather than just getting lost in the ether, I would, if you're entertaining a motion at this time, I would move to table this agenda item until the January regular session.
I second.
I don't think that's procedurally correct, though. I believe you've got to have a main motion before you can make secondary motions.
There was a motion, there was a, there was a, there was a discussion of a motion that was not formally made, nor was there a second. Correct. So we're still in just general at this point.
So what's the difference between tabling and no action?
Whatever the mayor decides, because there's no, there's no...
I like that answer.
No procedural authority.
Well, the difference is, it's either to a time certain, or table indefinitely, it's gone. So you, if you do it to a time certain, you're putting it to a point in time.
Simply put, if, if we took no action, this, that somebody would have to take the affirmative step to re, to put it back on a future agenda. Tabling is actually council deciding to put it on an agenda, taking the affirmative step to do that. That's in essence what the difference is.
And I think the council's decided to put this to a work, work session agenda.
Well, what I wanted to do was just move, move the, this item to the regular session, and then we can schedule the work. Do we assume that the work sessions won't happen before the regular session? We can do a February regular session then. I just want to make sure it's, it's on...
Here's the thing. In all reality, in all practicality, if we are going to have multiple workshops, which I expect, I don't know exactly when this ordinance would be, and what meeting it would be put back on.
Okay, let me, let me withdraw my motion, and I move to table this agenda item until the February regular session of the city council.
I second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Any abstentions? Motion fails. Move to item two. Consider ordinance number 2018-22, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Jersey Village, Texas at chapter 18. Businesses, Article 2, sexually oriented commercial enterprise, Division 1, generally, Section 18-31, to provide updated definitions, providing a severability clause, providing for appeal, providing a penalty as provided by Section 18-32 of the code, and providing an effective date. Christian Summers, building official. I'm glad you cleared out the Cub Scouts before this one. Thank you, Christian. We need to discuss this ordinance in graphic terms.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2018-22.
Second.
There's been a motion, seconds or any additional discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Opposing, any abstentions? Motion carried. Item three, consider resolution 2018-71, authorizing city manager to enter a contract with Clark Condon for the design and construction management of the gateway wayfinding signs. Jason Alfarro, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening. Last month, the city council authorized the city manager to negotiate a contract with Clark Condon for the design, bidding, and construction administration of the gateway signs. This project is one of the main items identified in the 2016 comprehensive plan. In our meeting with Clark Condon, we discussed several options for the best way to move forward. We have eight gateway entrances and five marquee signs, not including what may be created as part of the Jones Road crossing. Clark Condon and staff felt that it would be good to get the bulk of the survey work in agreements with the county and Harris County Toll Road Authority done at the start of the project, just in case we run into any issues, if we, if we need to find other locations for them. The proposed contract for Clark Condon has up to $200,000 for preliminary design, design development, construction documents, bidding, and construction administration. This is for the first round of signs. The second round, tentatively scheduled for fiscal year 20, would require much less of this preliminary design and design development work as it would already been completed. Right now, it's estimated that we will be out to bid on this project in May. All of the bids would come back to council for approval before the work is done as required, and construction is estimated to begin in July. City staff recommends a motion to authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Clark Condon for design and construction management of the gateway and wayfinding signs, and to approve resolution number 2018-71, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Clark Condon for design and construction management of the gateway and wayfinding signs. We also have Katie Golzari here with Clark Condon, just in case y'all have any other questions for her.
Thank you for sticking around for this agenda item. All right, any questions for Jason or staff on this item?
I have a question. You know, we engaged, we engaged his firm initially to come up with a concept and to make a presentation. Did we, was there an expenditure associated with that?
Yes, sir, I believe so. That was prior to my arrival.
Okay.
Roughly about $60,000, I believe. That was for the design, for the gateway landscaping master plan.
Right. I guess my question, I've had sticker shock through this process with, with the consulting fees and the design, and it seems to me that, that some of the task in this proposal should, should have been or were incorporated into the first proposal. And maybe, maybe they could explain what the difference is. A second concern is construction costs. And again, the sticker shock. And I want to be sure through, and I stated something last time, I want to be sure through this process that what we pay is a true market price. I want to be sure that, that it's not the same three contractors that always been in these projects. That it's not the, the same three contractors that have done 12 other jobs for, for, for you guys. That it is truly a competitive bid process. And to that point, perhaps if you guys could provide, I'm sure the contract will be approved, but a question I will be asking down the road is, who's bidding on, on Jersey Village? And who has done jobs for you previously? And my, my, my concern is that if you have two contractors that have done your last 20 jobs, it kind of... 20 jobs, it kinda tells me it may not be a very competitive bid process. So I'm just letting you know that somewhere down the line, I'll be looking for that information to, to justify my own thought process and, and to justify the expenditure.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, well, I, okay, well, I appreciate that process and what you described. Thank you.
Austin, uh, is this, uh, the scope of this agreement, is this one of those agreements that falls under the Professional Services Procurement Act, uh, that prohibits us from competitively bidding this particular contract out?
This would be a professional, uh, professional contract with the architect.
Okay, so state law ties our hands regarding us being able to competitively bid this out? Otherwise, we would.
Yeah. In the last month, the council reviewed their statement of qualifications, um, showing that they're qualified for this work. Last year, when we did the gateway master plan, and we had a big committee go through all of the statement of qualifications from five or six, maybe seven different firms that submitted their qualifications.
I just figured it'd be worth a reminder that that's tying our hands.
So, this was, this was originally budgeted for $60,000, correct?
No, sir, that, sorry. Last year, the, the gateway landscape master plan, that was the $60,000.
$60,000, so-
So this year, this year, we've budgeted $1 million for the design, the construction of the signs and everything like that.
Okay, that's, that's kinda where I was going, so, because that number wasn't making sense to me. So this falls within the scope, $1 million that we budgeted already.
Correct.
Okay.
And this, and just as a reminder, this was a, a, a portion of the comprehensive plan that was, uh-
Yeah, this was one of the, the big topics from the comprehensive plan, one of the ones that the citizens definitely voiced their, their support for.
Any other comments or questions from staff? Thank you very much. Looking for a motion on the resolution.
I move we approve resolution number 2018-71.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, seconds or any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Item four, resolution number 2018-72, authorizing an agreement with Wells Fargo Bank, North America for depository services. Isabel Cato, Finance Director.
Ah, yes. Uh, the current depository agreement between the city and Wells Fargo, which was issued for a three, three-year period, which two extension expires on October 28, 2018. A request for proposal for banking service was issued. Two banks responded for, with proposals. A comparative review of cost, revenue, services, and financial ability, as well as an evaluation of various aspects of the proposal, was done on these two proposals. We, I included in the meeting packet a summary of the information used in the review. The two banks that submitted the proposals are Frost Bank and Wells Fargo Bank. The evaluation of these two bank proposals ran Wells Fargo Bank first, and Frost Bank second.
Okay, any questions for Isabel?
Isabel, I see that the, uh, in the bid review, that, um, both bidders were pretty much equal, except on the ability to perform services. Uh, Frost Bank got a one, and Wells Fargo got a five.
Ah, yes. Uh, first of all, we look at the dates that they, for the ACH deposits, we, um, for, with, uh, Wells Fargo, we can send the ACH one day before the deposit, especially for payroll. With Frost Bank, we needed like two days. And sometimes that's kind of impossible to have the payroll in two days, in, in one or two days. Also, um, we need courier services. Uh, Frost Bank does not provide courier services, so I will have to send an employee every so often to the bank with cash for courier services. So, uh, Wells Fargo, uh, they, they said that we had to pay the courier services, but then at the end of the year, they will reimburse us for the payment of courier services. So that's the difference.
All right, any other questions for Isabel? Looking for a motion on the resolution.
I move to approve resolution number 2018-72.
Second.
There's been a motion, seconds or additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, Mayor and Council comments. Councilman Womackhorst.
I have no comments.
I wanna thank everybody in the fire department, uh, that responded to the fire in the Philippine, and all the neighboring departments that came to assist us with that fire. Excellent work. Um, thank you to everyone who came out and stuck through this discussion, and I, I appreciate public policymaking, and every one of you that came out and made a comment, whether you agree with me or not, I really appreciate that you came out and spoke your concerns. And a reminder, the fall frolic is coming up at Clark Henry Park at the end of the month.
Go Astros.
I have no comment.
I just wanted to echo what James said. Uh, thank you to the fire department for your, your great work. Um, you know, I, that's never easy, I'm sure, to, to respond to a fire where accelerants are involved, so, um, and, and thank you to everyone that came and stuck it out and listened to me rant on for a while. Thanks.
Thank you, Steph. Thank you, council. Thank you, residents. I also wanna give a quick shout, a shout out, thanks to all the Cub Scout groups that came out today. Councilman Warren and I got a great opportunity to present to them all the intricacies of city government, and I appreciate them coming out. Appreciate everybody else for coming out. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.